All right, thank you. We just come out of a closed session. We came into order at six o'clock tonight, immediately had a motion to go to a closed session so that during this meeting, we could actually take action on personnel and make announcements so that it wasn't happening at ten o'clock at night when companies go in here. So that's where we've been. We've just come out of a closed session, and at this time, I'll have four members certified. The only thing related to the motion, we go into a closed session, personnel and superintendent assessment, we're discussing a very close session.
Wesley Mills, certified.
Wesley Mills, certified.
Lucy Ann Meyer, certified.
Very normal certification.
And during the closed session, we did hear personnel report, and we did do the superintendent's annual assessment. Is there a motion to accept the personnel report as it was presented to us? Mr. Grove is our second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Rubin. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Swedder. You will find out what happened during that as we progress through this agenda very quickly.
You please stand for the pledge.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, America, to the Republic, which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
And pause for a moment of silence, please. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens, and there is time for public comment. Prior to action items on the agenda, we ask speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and ensure our meeting is reasonable in length. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time has elapsed. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from a school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
I move.
We have a motion from Ms. Bynum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Grove. Any comments? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. And Swedder. We have several recognitions for this evening, and it's an exciting time in the life of our school. So we're going to begin this evening discussing an event that happened and happened on an athletic field. And Catherine is going to forgive me for misstating her last name. Where's Catherine? Catherine, can you say it for me?
Croft.
Crofthamel. Did I do okay? Crofthamel. So the board has a resolution. We didn't pass these resolutions.
Oh, you have to. You have to. You're going to take this vote.
Okay. So the board has a resolution for Catherine. Rappahannock County Schools Resolution honoring the heroic act of athletic trainer Catherine Crofthamel. Whereas Catherine Crofthamel performed a heroic act that resulted in saving Coach Kenneth Burt's life at the cross-country meet, and whereas because of her quick thinking and response is the reason Coach Burt is alive today, and whereas she immediately performed CPR, instructed someone to grab her AED device, administered shock, and continued compressions until EMS arrived, and whereas Catherine remained calm and focused on the task at hand, allowing her to use the training she had received on using the AED, whereas the cross-country team is grateful to have Coach Kenneth Burt remain part of the Panther family, and now therefore be a resolve is a great honor and privilege for the Rappahannock County School Board to recognize Catherine for her selfless act in saving Coach Burt's life. Be it further resolved, this expression of appreciation and gratitude be made a part of the permanent records of Rappahannock County, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to her by the Rappahannock County School Board dated the 11th of May, 2021.
We get a motion.
We have a motion to accept this.
I am proud to move that we accept that.
We have a motion. Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. Ms. Bynum will grab the second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Would you please come forward? She's going to say something like she was just doing her job or something like that, right?
That's correct.
But it's very noble.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, you're not done. You can't leave.
One more thing to add. We have some special guests.
How are you? You need to get up here slow. Okay, so I've been driving around in the trunk of my car with Coach Burt's face. Can you hear me?
I'll hold this way.
Okay. Because somebody made a fat head with his face for the remainder of the season, and we were like, what are we going to do with that? So here you go. Here is something for you to remember in a personal note from the entire varsity cross-country team. We're very grateful for everything that you did that day. I know it was a very emotional day for a lot of us, but it was an event that none of us will forget. That is for sure. So thank you for everything that you did, and I'm a firm believer that God places people for a reason, my friend.
I didn't plan to speak. You did not? Were you guys going to do the gifting? All right.
Yes, one person.
Resolution honoring the service dedication of school nutrition worker Phyllis Frazier.
I don't think she's here tonight, but we wanted to mention that she...
So I was just wondering, we shouldn't just adopt all of these resolutions as a slate to employees? Resolutions? So there are eight, I believe, resolutions here, and while I would like to read all of them to you, I'm just kidding. While I'd like to read them all to you, I'm not going to do that. But we're going to approve all of these as a slate, all of the resolutions for these retirees. They vary from 20 years to 41 years of service in our division. So is there a motion to adopt the resolutions that we've signed this evening?
I move.
We have a motion from Ms. Bynum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Meyer. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. And so carry. Yes, ma'am.
Sure. So in addition to the resolutions, we have some retiree awards that we will also be giving out when you come to accept your resolution. The Golden Apple Award, as you can see on the table, is given to retirees from Rappahannock County Public Schools who have met the milestone of 30 or more years of service to the district. These dedicated teachers and staff have spent the better part of their lives challenging Rappahannock youth to reach high standards and expectations, all the while creating a love of learning in students of all abilities and backgrounds. The first inaugural Golden Apple Award was given to Patty Waddell in 2019, and we will honor our retirees with this tradition heretofore. I am pleased to name the recipients of the Golden Apple Award as they come up to get their resolution when we call your name, but I'll announce those now, who have dedicated at least 30 years or more to the students and families of Rappahannock County. And as I call your name, if you want to stand up at this point, that would be great. Candy Lama.
Woo-hoo!
Laney Vickers. Lilo Wolf. And Sheila Smith. And Candy and Sheila, if you'll remain standing. The grandfather clock represents time, time spent in tireless dedication to the education of children. The grandfather clock is classic, strong, with stable, balanced hands moving to the steady beat of the pendulum, the Rappahannock teacher's unwavering heart. The grandfather clock award is a new award honoring retirees who have served the division for 40 or more years. Just as the grandfather clock is a timeless keepsake, so shall you be, forever in the legacy you have left in the hearts and minds of thousands of children. And we are pleased that the recipients of the first ever grandfather clock awards will go to Candy Lama for 41 years of service and Sheila Smith also for 41 years of service.
This resolution is for Darlene Matheson. If you want to remain seated. She's not with us tonight.
Jimmy Swindler.
Before you sit down, can you come forward, please? Come. Jimmy's retiring after 20 years of service to our district. And yeah, I was just telling Jimmy, you know, when I think about Jimmy Swindler, I think about being all in, you know. All the chips go to the center of the table with this guy. So we appreciate all of the energy you've given into our school, Jimmy. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave Roberts retired in December?
Yes.
20 years? 21 years. 21 years. This one is for Laney Vickers. After 36 years of distinguished service as a teacher. 41 years of service for Rappahannock County School System, Sheila Smith.
Oh, no, we can multitask.
And Candy Lama, 41 years of distinguished service for Rappahannock County. And these for Phyllis Frazier and the others. We'll just make sure that they get them. We thank them for their service as well. Oh, it's appointment time.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me, item 3.8 on the agenda is the appointment of the new high school principal in Rappahannock. And the interview teams did an incredible job. We had quite a few very qualified applicants, and we put our applicants through quite a rigorous process. You know, we do not mess around. They had three separate interviews, narrowing down, narrowing down, and some really tough questions based on all of the criteria that we've been working on developing in our comprehensive plan through surveys, through focus groups, talking about all of those pieces that we knew were important. I've never seen an applicant rise to the top so quickly and so unanimously as this candidate has. And I'm pleased to announce, and Mr. Swedder, if you'll come up here, Mr. Carlos Dwight Swedder has been appointed as the next principal of Rappahannock County High School. I'm going to ask you to come over to this table, sir, as I read about you. Mr. Carlos Swedder, he has served as assistant principal at Eastern View High School in Culpeper County for the last four years. Prior to that, he began his career as a high school history teacher in Virginia Beach, and quickly became a leader among his peers serving as the social studies department chair and curriculum leader. He has served as international baccalaureate middle years program coordinator, advancement via individual determination or AVID coordinator, and dean of students in Alexandria City Public Schools, and served as a middle school social studies teacher and grade level chairperson in Henrico County Public Schools. He is a graduate of Norfolk State University, having earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in history, and a graduate of Hampton University, having earned a Master of Arts degree in educational leadership. In addition, Lilo, he earned his gifted education endorsement from the School of Education at the University of Virginia, and recently completed a graduate certificate in education finance from the McCourt School of Public Policy at Georgetown. We are beyond thrilled to welcome you to the Rappahannock County Panther family. It's such a hard loss to lose, Mr. Jimmy Swindler, who's not lost totally. He's going to be in the community, thank goodness, but we're so glad to have you here. So at this time...
Yay!
And I believe Carlos has some words, too, before we let him sit. So would you like to come to the podium, sir?
Or the table so you can see people. That's pretty shameful.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me pretty well? Chairman Mills, Vice Chairman Grove, members of the Rappahannock County School Board, Madam Superintendent, members of the Division Leadership Team, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, I stand before you humbled and honored to be appointed as the next principal of Rappahannock County High School. I would like to extend a heartfelt thanks and appreciation to our Division Superintendent, Dr. Shannon Lee Grimsley, for her trust, for her confidence, and my abilities to enhance the educational environment, the instructional core, and the school culture at the high school that we all love. As we move past the fog of this pandemic, we have a lot of opportunities ahead of us, and I look forward to leading those opportunities. I am forever grateful to Dr. Grimsley for this opportunity and will serve our students with everything in me. I would also like to thank the principal selection committee. I would like to publicly thank that committee. It was a very thorough and thoughtful process, as our Division Superintendent outlined, co-chaired by Dr. Carol Johnson, a proud graduate of Longwood University and James Madison University, and Mr. Michael Tupper, one of my predecessors and our current executive director for student services. Dr. Johnson and Mr. Tupper, at the different rounds in the interview, they allowed me to think very deeply about the questions that they were asking. And in every encounter, and we had three encounters, they left me in a very reflective posture about what I answered and going back and thinking about how I could do it better. To the teachers, to the administration, Ms. Gates, thank you for being here today, my colleague, to the parents, to everyone involved, thank you for such a great process. They had an opportunity to really kick the tires and to get to know me very well. I really appreciate it, and I thank God that they selected me among the many, many talented persons that applied for the job. I would also like to thank my strength and stay, the love of my life and the life of my love, my wife, an English educator, Yolande Lilana Wilson Swedder. She's sitting in the back right there. We will celebrate 10 years of marriage and 14 years of togetherness this upcoming July. She's my biggest cheerleader and my biggest critic. She is my muse, my conscience, the rock of our family, and one of the strongest women that I know emotionally, mentally, and physically. It takes a lot of people in this work that we do, and I really appreciate you. Thank you, Yolande, for allowing me to take this journey. Thank you for the long nights, the working weekends, being supportive of everything that I've done. So thank you, honey. I love you. To my future colleagues at Rappahannock County High School, those in attendance tonight, I wish I could start tomorrow. I do. I have followed you from afar. Members of the committee know I've been watching them carefully, and I've watched the different activities. I've watched their work. Some amazing things are happening at the high school. This past school year has been hard for everyone, for our teachers and for everyone. I look forward to meeting you soon and approaching the new school year beginning July 1 with a fresh perspective and new ideas, coupled with honoring the traditions and programs as appropriate that makes our school the model for the community, for the Commonwealth, and the nation. To the Rappahannock County parents, the Rapp alumni, our business partners, and residents of this county, I look forward to meeting you, to listening to you, and to being an active part of this community. This is a community school, and I'm going to need your support in the work that we plan on doing for kids. Finally, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, to all the current students and the future students of our high school, I love you. I pray for your development and your successes every day. The past several weeks that we've engaged in this process, I've been praying for those students' success. How we improve equity for all students, how we provide opportunities and experiences for students, how we deliver a holistic platform of tier-one instruction and social emotional support while at the same time tailor making those approaches for those individual students, knowing them by name and by need, is the first thing I'm going to think about in the morning and the last thing I think about when I go to bed. Madam Superintendent, I am so ready to get to work. Thank you so much.
This is an exciting time, isn't it? Sad saying goodbye to some people and hello to new people. Yeah, and we welcome you. Always feel welcome. We had, we just got finished with Shannon's annual assessment, and, you know, I told her, go grab the tissue box. This is going to be one of those assessments where you got to have a bad box of tissues, right? But anyway, she doesn't even want to talk about it because I need you to know that this young lady received a grade of exemplar, which is not very common. And so in all areas and all metrics, this board evaluated her as a body and found her exemplary. As a part of that, we also wrote a new contract for Dr. Grimsley for four years, starting in July. So we're going to be... So we're going to be signing that tonight as well. If my court was longer, I'd be over there where it's at, but I guess I'll go rescue it here in a minute. But before we do that, we have to have a motion. And Mr. Rubin, do you have that motion, please?
Yes, sir. I move that in recognition of Dr. Grimsley's exemplary performance and with her concurrence, we terminate her current appointment and appointment effective June 1, 2021, and simultaneously reappoint and employ her for a new term of four years as Division Superintendent, beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2025, and that we direct and authorize the Chair to execute the contract on behalf of the board.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Rubin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Grove. Is there any comments, anybody?
Congratulations.
Hurrah.
Congratulations.
Hurrah.
Hurrah. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Oh, we had to do roll call, right? We had to do a roll call.
Yeah, I think you're right.
So I don't know if you noticed when Chris was reading this motion, he said terminate, and everybody's like, what, what? Wait a minute. But that's the way legally this whole thing has to be handled in the state of Virginia. So basically, she has to be terminated and the new contract adopted. So that's why the language went like that. But also, as a part of the rules for an action like this, we have to take a roll call vote.
Chris Rubin, aye.
Rachel Bynum, aye.
Wesley Mills, aye.
Lucy Ann Meyer, certified ayes.
Aye.
Aye.
Larry Grove, aye.
And we have all ayes. It is unanimous. And thank you so much for your service to us thus far, and we look forward to the next quarters. Let's go sound this thing. At this time, I, can you hear me? So at this time, what we're going to do is we're going to take a short recess to allow you to speak to people, to allow people to go home if they want to go home, and somebody, you know, some of these ladies might need help carrying their awards to the car. So we're going to take a short break. We'll say five minutes, five to seven minutes, and then we will resume the agenda at the Student Liaison video. Agenda, we're on item 3.10, 3.10.
Yes.
Which is the report of our Student Liaison, which is videotaped tonight. So if you direct your attention over to the video screen, and we'll hear from...
Cassia. So Cassia Gainor sent her report.
Cassia.
This way. And we just need to hold the mic because we could not get the sound to play the recording.
Good evening, everybody. I'm very sad to say that I won't be able to give this in person, but I hope that this video will suffice and also be able to give you all the information that you're looking for. So as many of you realize, the school year is coming to its final close, and all the students are overjoyed about summer vacation... and all the students are overjoyed about summer vacation and/or graduation. With this ending of the school year, the classes and the administration and teachers are all trying to put together events so we can go out with a bang and make some really good memories. Just this previous week, we had our high school spirit week and our seniors were able to have a senior week. During the spirit week, we had awesome spirit days like the Western Cowboy Friday and our tacky tours Tuesday. And then, that week, which was also the senior week, the seniors were able to enjoy a nice breakfast, tie-dye some shirts, they had a special social media tribute, which some of you may have been a part of, and they even got to participate in an awesome giveaway. And this giveaway was possible because the community graciously donated about $1,500, all of which went to the prizes that would benefit the students as they moved on to the next stages of their life. Some of these prizes were more targeted towards dorm life, including baskets of laundry products that you would need and decorations for dorm rooms, and then other prizes were more geared towards electronic side. One senior that I was able to talk with was very, very happy about the AirPods that they were given. Almost all the seniors were able to leave with an awesome prize that week. And then, earlier this month, we also were able to have our step-up day, where some of our senior students were able to lead our rising eighth graders around the high school, show them some of the rooms that our teachers were teaching in, and then show them like the library and the gym and everything, just to kinda get them used to it, and excited to move up here with us next year. And then, we have another activity that I'm very happy to talk about, and I've talked about this before under the name of Alternative Prom, but it is now officially the Rappahannock Lure. And that is going to be for our seniors and our juniors and guests from ninth grade and up who have been invited to come, and the date is set for the 22nd, which is going to be next Saturday, and all our preparations are being finalized. We're going to have a movie, a bonfire, lots and lots of food, games like Limbo, which I'm personally excited about, and even a character artist. We're also very happy to be crowning our prom court as well. And then, on behalf of the junior presidency as a whole, I would just like to thank our class sponsor, Ms. Gillingham, and all the sponsors who have helped make this possible. And then, I would also like to thank Ms. Janet Robey and Sad for being so generous to donate lots of the food and the entertainment that we have since we did this in cohesion with them. They were very influential in putting this together. And then, just a big shout-out to the whole community. We have a lot and lots of volunteers for setting up and taking down and chaperoning and getting equipment there that we need and donating things. So, there's a lot of thank-you letters to send out, but I just wanted to give a big overall thank you to the community for supporting us in this endeavor to go out with something phenomenal. Then, we have other plans, I believe it's for this weekend, but they're going to have the senior prom and the senior banquet, all of which are going to be very, very fun, and include dancing. This dancing is going to happen at a table where the seniors have chosen who they want to... This is only for seniors, by the way, but they have chosen a table to sit at with a group of their friends, and they can only dance with that table, but there's going to be some dancing and songs and a DJ, of course, and some other activities and lots of individually packaged food and everything so we can keep with the COVID safety guidelines, and it's going to be outside under the tent. And then, the day after that, there is the senior banquet. And I think me and every senior and junior and all the wonderful adults that are helping us are very excited for this all to happen and go through. And then, last thing to end my report, I just wanna give a brief thank you on behalf of the student body for everyone's help and support in making this year safe and happy and as fun as possible. We have a lot of really great teachers and administration who have done a phenomenal job with the way things have been. You guys have worked really hard on making sure all the desks are sanitized and making sure that we have those sanitation supplies to do that. A lot of the teachers have really stepped up in working with the kids and opening up their hours, even when they're at home, to people who are struggling with the online schooling for that, and being there for the virtual kids who can't come into class and ask questions. And everybody's just done a really phenomenal job at making this school year as good as it possibly can be. And hopefully, next year, who knows, maybe COVID won't be as big of a thing, but I think our school has a good thing going, and even if it is, that we'll be able to make it even better than this year. And that's my report, and thank you for listening and watching, I guess. Everybody have a good evening.
What an amazing young lady.
She's awesome. Nice and thorough, I like that.
Yeah. Wonderful. Right, so donations, I know, Amy, I know you gotta trot around, but the donations are the next thing on the agenda, and there were a lot of them.
There were a lot, very lucky.
And so, best to look at the list.
Do you want me to read them?
I don't... Sure.
Okay. Frances and Alice Bruce donated $2,000 for senior activities. Sunday Men's Basketball donated $800 for athletics. BMB Signal donated $2,000 for athletics. The following donations are for the RCHS 2020 Senior Week Raffle. BMB Signal donated 500. Bethel Baptist Church in Amisville donated $100. Warranton Hobby Shop donated a $40 gift card and a game. Appleton Campbell donated a cuire. Lynn Hill United Methodist Church donated $50. The PTO donated 300. The Country Cafe Pit Stop donated five gift cards. Doctor and Mrs. Brooke Miller donated $100. Adina Sellers, $100. The Rappahannock County Lions Club donated $200. Griffin Tavern donated a $35 gift card. And Amy Wright donated LED lights.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from our April 13 meeting? We have votes in the spot, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Grove and Thomas. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? This is the order, Brooke, yes, to review the bills.
I did, and everything should be in good order for the eight percent. The Rappahannock's opposed, that's really good.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
We have motion for Mr. Rubin, is there a second?
Okay.
Second for Ms. Bynum, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? This is the order, Dr. Grimsley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. Item 5.1 is an equity team update, so I'm gonna ask Dr. Bolt, the leader of our equity team, to come to the podium as I pull up her PowerPoint here. Just a second.
All right, I'd like to first...
You're gonna have to probably...
Yeah, I'd like to first...
That's good.
Let me get it down so I can reach it.
The center one, there you go.
There you go.
Thank you. Acknowledge our committee members, which we have three additional members here. We have two teachers, Burnett Rosards and Kristen Fraser. We have two parents, Hope Dunn and Stacy Williams. Hope is here tonight, raise your hand, Hope. We have two community members, Dr. Patty Peterson and Sally Morgan, I think everybody knows Sally. We have a bus driver, Chandre Graves. Our social worker, Kathy Sickler's on the committee, Dr. Carol Johnson represents special ed, and then myself. We started this in September, just to look at what was going on, and we... I think you went one too far.
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, I missed that slide, my bad. I wanted to do the definition of educational equity.
Okay.
And so, that is when we can achieve... We achieve that when we can eliminate the predictability of student outcomes based on race, gender, zip code, ability, socioeconomic status, or language spoken at home. So, basically, when we can take the barriers away. Oh, I'm sorry, Shannon.
That's okay.
So, what we did was, we followed our... The Virginia Department of Education came out with guidelines of how to do this. And so, we've tried our best to follow those guidelines and to navigate this whole equity trip or examination we've been doing of our own district. So, here's an example. I think people don't understand always what equality and equity is. So, in the first picture, they all have equal stools. The second one, the short student has two stools, and so, that's equality. The third one takes away the barriers, where everybody is on the same playing field. So, I think that's important, that we remove those barriers for our students, all our students, so no matter what is holding them back, we reach them. And it ties right into our mission statement that we currently have. So, our mission is through educational opportunities, the mission from RCHS will be to promote a culture of learning, a roadmap for excellence, and the passion and character that leads to each student's success. That's our equity statement, that we do everything we can to help our students. We examine any barriers that are holding our students back and figure out ways to get over those barriers for our students. So, steps we've taken, we've analyzed data, attendance, grades, discipline, SOLs. We've gathered students' perception through survey, we've gathered staff's perception through survey. We analyze the survey results and the policy implications, and we've analyzed policy. So, what we're gonna do with these findings is we're gonna hand that over to our admin team, that is gonna take that data and will give suggestions, but it's ultimately up to our admin team. And we found some distance between where we wanna be and where we are, but nothing that is not, that is insurmountable. I really think that if we examine what we've gathered and we get together, the equity team will commit, continue next year. Dr. Grimsley actually asked us to start thinking of essential questions so we can ask our admin, to get them processing and thinking of outside-the-box and ways to do things. So, I think this is a valuable team, they all bring a different lens to the table. It's a diverse group, other than we're all women, which I find ironic, but... So, this is nothing new to Rappahannock. We've always looked at data, but this is a real dark, direct lens on this to help all our students. So, the committee recommends that we do a policy review. I know our policy comes from the Virginia School Board Association, but surprisingly, a superintendent can only be a male. They only say he.
Oh, really?
Or him.
I can't, I can't hear very well.
The school board policy we have...
Take that off.
Sure, the school board policy we have.
Yep.
Superintendent can only be a male. It only says he or him. So, I contacted him and showed him all the places that it was gender biased. So, I mean, because we read those things without even thinking about them unless you're looking for it. And I think this is where this group really comes in, that we're zoning in on things that we can bring to our admin to help them. We want it just, this whole equity just to become part of our comprehensive plan, which we're scheduled to do a new one, and part of the profile of a graduate. Because the profile of a graduate is just making our students ready to go out into the workforce and be community members, and we all have to get along and we all have to respect each other to do that. Through the comprehensive plan, professional development, curriculum development, and cultural awareness, just that we're all different, but in some ways we're the same, in some ways we're different. So, those are the recommendations, and I'm hoping that the committee will stick with me another year as we continue on the next venture of this. These ladies have worked very hard, we meet twice a month, minimum.
I'm just wondering, I'm sorry, I'll let you finish, quick.
Yeah, next is questions.
Okay, so I'm just wondering, you know, if it's a policy review, that's our thing. That's our domain, and really, we should be reviewing that.
And that was just a... Right.
No, it's a really good point, but any corrections we find, that needs to go to V S B A.
I've seen it.
And almost the direction should be to tell them, "Go check your, go check your work," because everything we're adopting...
Yes, sir.
Anyway, there used to be local policies 20 years ago, but we don't do that anymore because it's too risky, right? We get all our policies from V S B A, from Richmond, and we go, "Yep, there we go." Yep, we'll sign that one.
After 20 lawyers have looked at it.
Yeah.
But they missed that. Because we've gone through it, and just looking at it a different way.
And you've already contacted them?
On the... I was like, "Well, I have a female superintendent, and she does not go by he."
Hopefully, they don't put the blinders on and only see that one.
No, no, no.
And the recommendation will be coming to you for a vast policy review. Here's all of the things. That was an example as they were reviewing some. So, as we're working on comprehensive planning, you will get a slate of things to approve as we work through those together.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Well, and I thank my committee, they've worked hard all year long.
Have you given any thought to getting...
Thank you.
Bravo.
Any thought to surveying citizens and...
Yes.
You know, people, what their perception...
Of the community.
Of the whole thing is. It'd be interesting to see what the people who are not involved in school see as a perception of equity and equality.
Right, and so, we see this as a marathon, not a sprint. So, that's something that we're looking into for next year, because we really have worked hard and...
Well, and I think you said it really well, Robin, that we've had this as an equity statement ever since we adopted our vision and mission. That is a huge equity statement, and I love how you showed this graphic, because I think it gets misinterpreted a lot, like the equity is, in school, is about making the outcome the same for everybody, and I don't think that's what this graphic shows at all. It's making the opportunity and access to the opportunity equal for all, but then, how you get there and your trajectory, I don't know if you're gonna be a pitcher or a left, you know, in the center field, the way you get there is going to... The outcome is not the same. If we, you know, try to make the outcome the same for everybody, that's not helping kids. It's not, so just making the accessibility equal for everyone and equitable so that everyone has the same access to the same opportunities. And I think that's a point that people miss on that graphic, that I just wanna point out, that when you remove barriers, they can see the opportunities before them, and that that looks the same, no matter what your background is.
And educating everyone to that point.
Right.
Right. That's vital.
And that's what we discussed when we originally did the comprehensive plan, even prior to my superintendency, and that's why we adopted that statement. That is an equity statement that we need to live up to, and that's why we need frequent monitoring and improvement in that area. So, thank you so much, Dr. Bolt.
Good timing, too. I mean, our comprehensive plan, I think next year, we have to do that thing again.
Yep.
And it's a five-year document?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's coming up, so it's good that we've got this...
It's a good fit right in there.
Yes, it's good timing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Bolt.
Thank you.
Item 5.2 is just a quick reopening update, and I figured I'd just share the celebrations and ceremonies, flyer that Holly has put together, because we really only have, what is it, 10 in-person days left of school? Oh, my goodness, how did we get here? And there is so much going on. We have senior week that's just happened, this weekend, senior formal prom, and Cassia ran through a lot of these things. I pretty much told my husband every weekend from here on out, "I'm busy." You will not see me in May. There's a whole lot going on. Of course, graduation, May 28, at Panther Stadium, we're so excited. This is coming together really well, and we'll be able to accommodate many guests for our seniors in a way that we haven't done before. So, we are actually very excited about this. We'll see how it turns out and pray for no rain, and everything will be just fine. At the elementary school, lots of events going on as well, and teachers and grade levels are handling those. And if you're a parent of elementary school students, I know I am, I've gotten some information about those. Some are doing some Zoom invites, but 7th grade graduation, kindergarten, and preschool is something that we definitely... is something that we definitely wanted to do for the kids and the parents, too. So we have those things going on. And a quick update on our COVID situation, the Courtney's team with contact tracing did a phenomenal job. That last round of cases with a large family did take quite a bit of time to contact trace. And, but that's okay. That's why we have this plan in place to work through that, and it worked through very, very well. And we are out of the, the risk for any more transmission in school based on the quarantining, so everyone's all good. And we kept the transmission rate at zero percent in the, in the school, even with all of that going on. So you can see the health and safety plan does work very, very well. So we're very pleased with that. And we have reminded the community, just remember, it's still here, and students have not yet been vaccinated, so they can still pass it along. And when they do, we do have to do this contact tracing and quarantine, and the last thing we want is for kids and families to have to miss out on all these great things because, you know, they didn't follow some of the rules and things. So, and sometimes it's, it's very silent. So just remember to stay vigilant. Ten days, guys. Ten in-person days.
Give them two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, come on. So I think we're, we're making it there. I think people took that message very, very well and have been doing a great job and tightening up, so. Any questions about any of that? Okay. We're almost there?
Okay, and that concludes my reports.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to reports of the Headwaters representative?
Yes, I have a report. If I can find it, sorry. All right. So Headwaters has awarded scholarships over $100,000 to sixteen graduating seniors and nineteen renewal scholars for past scholarship recipients. And they're grateful for the support shown during the 2021 Scholarship Campaign with the Give Local Piedmont, which just happened this month. Over $50,000, which is amazing, was raised for scholarships. And especially since the Taster Rappahannock isn't happening this year, that's huge and important. They're going to do the summer chorus again, and it'll be the last two weeks of June with the performance on July 2nd and probably an outdoor venue that hasn't been determined yet. And enrollment is ongoing now. There are ten enrolled currently, and it's, it's in, it's in partnership with RAC through a Claudia Mitchell Arts Fund grant, so that is a good partnership. And then after-school is going to have their final session on Thursday, and there have been many guest workshops this past few weeks, including juggling, birdhouse building, goat visitors from the Future Farmers of America group, Earth Day workshop involving planting trees with rap flow, and, and there'll be more to come next fall. And there's another initiative that will be, I believe, in our, in our new business, which we, which is on our agenda. It involves Headwaters.
Thank you very much. MBGS?
Yes, we did meet for a change. That was good. We met on April 15. We, it was primarily financial reports, the fall in-person classes where, where labs are being held at both campuses. And I, you know, basically, that's what we talked about. But we have a good financial report, so that's not going to increase our tuition. So that's, that was the big part.
Yes.
And we, we were getting, we were getting a number, what was the number of seats? Because a couple of them were?
We had, we had six. We gave up one or two.
Well, we had, we had eight at one point, because we got two at-large slots that we then absorbed, and that was not paid by us. That's state funding for at-large slots. We did end up having really low numbers this year for new applicants. So we devised a motion in, in the governing board meeting to be able to sell those slots temporarily for one year until we get the enrollment back up, and then we get it back. So there, it's just a temporary one year. We don't want to give them up because we know the kids are coming. So kids are coming up, but we really want to push access to that, and we've talked at length with the exec, new executive director over there, Kelly Huff, and she's adamant to get our rap numbers back up, so.
Now, the, the applications for students that would want to go there in the fall are probably already due, right?
Oh, they've been due.
Yep, and we've already selected.
Everybody's been accepted.
They've already been selected, right? Have they been selected already?
Yes.
Oh, so they already know.
Yes.
Good, good. And do we, did we fill all of our seats for next year?
We had extra from the ones graduating and coming out, you know, didn't have as many coming in that applied, so that's why we sold the two, two slots to get back after.
Okay, so that's next year's.
Yes.
And we made sure it was in the minutes, that it was a one-year deal.
Great. All right, good. It's good to know. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to public comments, anyone like to address the board this evening? Anybody? Lenny?
Lenny Jano, Hawthorne.
Stonewall.
Stonewall Hawthorne. Sorry, guys. I'd first like to address the board as a parent, because I have no shame. My family was the large family that all came down with COVID, and I wanted to admire, just give my recognition and admiration to, oh, she's left by now, the school nurses and administrative and staff that handled it so professionally. I am kind of an open book, and I was willing to blast that out there, but they didn't let anybody know, although it's pretty, pretty obvious. It was a total shocker to us that one child came back positive, and then, you know, with, with some mild, very mild symptoms, and then another one. We got them all tested, and honestly, I don't think that if they would have been all the same family, you wouldn't have ever known that all five had, had the cases. So just goes to show you what happens in the community. That's what's going on out there. Anyways, that's my first statement. Now, I'd like to go into my Headwaters as executive director. I wanted to thank RCPS for lending us the POG team for helping with our scholarship community, our scholarship process that we just went through, especially Jenny Capsa as the profile of a graduate, and Lee Bernstein have really helped us as career advisor, is that what she's called, the career?
Virginia College Advising Corps.
College Core Advisor. We did give out over, we gave sixteen graduating RCHS seniors. They got a total of $55,000 for the graduating seniors this year. Where our numbers were lower, we usually get more applicants, but I think this crazy year had to do with that, but by default, they got more money. And we also gave $49,000 to nineteen past graduates that are, are ongoing for renewals. So we wanted to say we're very thrilled that we have this program and that the community has stepped up and helped us out so much. We were able to do wonderfully on Give Local Piedmont, and it's exciting. That's, it's rewarding when you can call someone. I had a conversation with a student just before I came in here to let her know that we, she's getting the most amount of money from anybody this year as a renewal, who was just saying, can you help me out? Rent has gone up like crazy. I don't know what to do. I said, well, I can't really help with that, but I can help here. And she almost started crying. So it's very rewarding, and I appreciate all you guys do to make it happen also.
You know, I remember, I remember when, when Headwaters started this philosophy of, you know, not just a scholarship and get out the door, but keeping track of a student, because when I was a graduate from high school, I got a scholarship that lasted me one quarter at the time, it was a quarter system. And after that, I was just hanging out there.
Yep.
Right? So, and you said nineteen?
Nineteen renewals.
That's nineteen. And that's so admirable and, and so meaningful that, you know, they're not just out the door, that there's a connection there.
I agree. We gave out sixty-eight scholarships spread across thirty-five kids. That's with seniors and graduates or and renewals. And if you look, an average scholarship was $1,500, but we gave out sixty-eight of those. So each kid got, I mean, a lot of money this year. It's, it's great, and it's, it's really exciting to be able to not just get the kids off to college, but get them through.
Right, right.
And of course, Headwaters also has initiatives to help out those who are going into trade school and those who are doing, were looking into dual enrollment, help out in that ways also, and workforce solutions. So we're really excited about the future.
Yeah. We are so appreciative of the role that you all are playing.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board this evening? Anyone? All right, moving on to new business. We did have an attachment and something that's very exciting, and I don't know if you were a part of the public hearing process, but during the public hearing process, the idea was spawned of creating a task force to look at school funding. And of course, we've been through three sessions that Headwaters had initiated to, to basically educate our community. And so all of these things, I think, were, were creating an environment that resulted in this. And so I'll let the superintendent speak to it, because she and, and the county administrator came together and basically started this, this thing that we called SIFT. And, and I can't tell you how hard it is to come up with a name for something, and we finally came up with a name, which I think is a good name. And so, Dr. Grimsley, you want to speak to this and how far we've gotten so far?
Certainly, certainly. So SIFT, I have to say, Mr. Mills and I were texting back and forth like, oh, it was driving us crazy.
How about this? How about this? How about this? How about this?
And he's the one I have to credit the name to. I'm like, that's perfect. We're sifting through numbers and this is great. I love it. School Innovative Finance Task Force. But anyway, so our charter is that this team was formed by the county administrator and myself to focus in understanding, focus on current financial realities and researching opportunities to influence that portfolio. The task force will spawn Panther teams. And again, that was Mr. Mills, well, actually, Mr. Curry's contribution to Mr. Mills' comment that in the FBI, they call these things tiger teams, that pounce into something and, you know, get it done and then come out. So ours are Panther teams to research specific areas of interest and report back to the task force. And then results will be disseminated publicly. Our work has already begun, so co-chairs, Mr. Curry and myself, and other steering members, Mr. Mills, Chairwoman Debbie Donahue of the Board of Supervisors, and Gary Achill, Headwaters chair. And we came up with these three Panther teams that seem to really come out of all of those conversations throughout the budget year process, through the community conversations that Headwaters so graciously hosted. And we have Panther Team One, Local Composite Index, which Mr. Curry and Mr. Mills are leading. And that team is going to study the effects of the variables computed in the LCI and explore the possible impact scenarios when you change those variables. Sensitivity analyses will be, and projected scenario schematics will be detailed with answers to essential questions that are developed by the team. And part of those discussions have been very rewarding that I've seen so far. They have several team members that have already joined, and these were open to some of the community members who have shown interest in these areas. So I know that team has already been at work. And you can speak to that. That's your Panther team, so.
Yeah, I guess one thing I want to make sure we're clear about, this, the, the idea with Panther teams is they're short-duration, task-oriented teams. And so when people volunteer for them, they know, I'm not on this thing for four years, right? I'm on this thing to answer some questions. This is going to last three to six months. We're going to have a resultant report, and then I'm off of this thing. So it's easier to recruit people to help out, especially something complex, when they know that there's a beginning and a, and a quicker end. So that's where the Tiger Team, Panther Team idea came from. And so that's all I would want to add, is we're already starting to reach out, and if, if the community knows of members that could contribute to any one of these categories already, it's good to contact the superintendent or the, or the county administrator and make sure that they know. And we'll fold them in to what it is they're the, the goals for each one of these things.
Right. Now Panther Team Two is my team. That's the state budget review. So really, with that one, we are examining the state budget and how its Virginia codes that are associated with it impact every school district in Virginia. So my team has already begun. We have a template, a spreadsheet. We've trained a team on gathering all that data for every school district in the regions. And what we're looking for is where there may be opportunities to impact the basic aid formulas or where our opportunities are to maybe impact some local or regional agreements with other school districts, where we might be able to achieve some additional supplemental basic aid. So anything where we see changes, we are analyzing every district over the last ten years and looking at each biennium to have noticed any changes that we've seen, which lines what, what the impact was and why. And then once we identify those areas, COSARS, the Coalition of Small Rural Schools, has agreed to help all of this work, too, to help us do whatever we need to do at the general assembly level and help advocate for some additional funding.
And on, on that team, as an example, ten years ago, Dr. Chappell initiated a relationship with Madison County Schools, which we still adopt annually here, which was a way of tapping into another county's LCI and getting funds into this county. So that's an example of the types of things that Shannon is leading up to investigate what our alternatives are there.
And then our third Panther team is philanthropic opportunities. And Mr. Achill, I don't know if you want to speak to that team, since that's your area.
Good evening. I'm Gary Achill, Hampton, still. I'm excited about this one, because even though we've tapped and retapped, charitable contribution is well above our, our size in this county, as is having inspired the Give Local Piedmont campaign just finished. There are people in this county who are deeply committed to public education, who have not necessarily viewed any of our current giving modes or programs as really meeting their dream. When you talk to them about creating something that for the next couple of decades could put Rappahannock in a different position, there's a different conversation that takes place. So the initial opportunity we're exploring is the creation of a separate endowment that would not be Headwaters. Headwaters might administer it and might not, but it would be a separate endowment simply to secure the future of public education in this county. The question is, what is the single best way to do that? I have floated a proposition that teaching and teachers are the foundation of the future of education in the county, and we are probably most at risk and least competitive year after year, even though you guys do everything you can to do increases. If we start at the bottom and increase by five percent, everybody above us who increases by five percent opens the gap. So my initial suggestion was, can we find a way to level the playing field for Rappahannock County? Create an endowment that would somehow provide either incentives or additional compensation or something, and it gets a little technical how you do this. We don't want to do anything that would allow some county residents to say, oh, good, we don't have to pass the budget for teachers because somebody else is going to pick up the tab. So we have to avoid that. But there, as I began the research, there are several states and there are several counties outside of Virginia that have already done this. And where there's a statewide foundation, it's incredible, because they actually level the playing field for rural and small school districts. But I think we have the potential to do something here. It might be as simple as moving expenses or continuing education incentives or perhaps some adjustments like a signing bonus when you start and a bonus after five years. We don't know yet. We're exploring that. But are there ways that we could actually create an endowment that would kick off enough annual income to add, I don't know, maybe a hundred thousand a year to instructional budget? Those are required positions. They have to be funded, and the state gives us, what, eighteen percent of every teacher's salary? So that's where we're looking right now, but by no means is that the limit. We're open to any suggestion for any way that we can find private dollars. This is not so much grant money, although that's also a component. But this is largely, how do we attract large contributions, at least initially, and then create something that is not just a one-year or a two-year solution, but could become a permanent part of the fabric of Rappahannock County's support for public education? This is totally independent of Headwaters, so just that there's no confusion. I'm happy to lead that because we are the Public Education Foundation, but this is not a Headwaters initiative. This is part of this initiative, and we hope to attract new and we hope substantial donors. So that's where we are right now. It's just the beginning, but there have been some meetings. We are putting together a small group of people. I agree with the chair, this is not a long-term deal. We hope to have something ready to propose no later than the end of the calendar year, so by the end of December. And we'll keep you posted. And again, as the chair said, anyone who's got names or suggestions or recommendations or concerns, send them through the superintendent or you know, you all know how to reach me. So, but I think this is exciting, and we hope we can pull something together.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, that's all right. If you could put this into a, a sentence or a short paragraph, what would be the, what is the desired outcome of this group?
Yeah, so that was why we created that charter, because we were afraid people need to know what this group is not. That was our goal.
That's really important. That's really important.
So while we were sitting there, we were, if we need to correct this charter, if the board has suggested to correct the charter, it'd be good to know. But we thought that this charter laid out what we were generally trying to achieve. I can't read it from here because I can't, I have my glasses on. But if you see what it says, really, our goal is to come up with these creative ideas about things to explore and including the community and the expertise we have in the community, to come up with answers or possible scenarios that we could pursue to enhance our funding profile in the county. So that's really the task force scope. And so my thought is, you know, Panther Teams one through three, by the time we get to Christmas, they are done. And they've reported out their results for the boards, for the public, for whoever wants to consume it. And then probably more questions might come in. Or we might need to start Panther Team Four or Panther Team Five. And so I saw, that's kind of how we saw this thing rolling. I'm not sure if that answers the question, but the charter was intended to say, "This is what we are not," or what, what we are, because we didn't want people to think it was something other than that. It's not a, it's not a board. It's not a board meeting. It's, it's trying to tap expertise in our community to, you know, to analyze our situation. Because, you know, for the last twenty years, things, things are trending a certain way, right? And, and they're not in our favor. So how do we affect that? How do we change?
You mean financially, you're talking?
Yeah.
Related to finances in the division, specifically schools. That's why it's called the School Finance Effort. So it's not related to, and, but then again, you know, this issue with, with land use and how it's profiled affects the school funding formula.
Sure.
So it's, it's not strictly school issues. It's countywide issues and how they're affecting the school and, and do we want it to stay that way? Could be we say, "No, that's the way we like it." And, and just, you know, let's all be, you know, knowledgeable of what it is we've created so that we're, we got buy-in in it, right? So that, that's really what we're trying to do, is make sure we're tapping the right resources to do the right analysis, to make sure that we're not just blindly, you know, following whatever we're given and, and not analyzing it. So I think it's a responsible thing to do, to me, so that we're, you know, we're going into, whatever the future is twenty years from now, we went into it with our eyes open.
And collectively advocate for what we all see as, as the goal. When we discuss these things together and analyze these different problem-solving techniques and strategies, and we come up with a collective idea, then we can move that forward and collectively advocate, which is how you make things move at the state level. You can't do that unless you have the support of your communities and both boards working together and those joint resolutions and all those pieces that come from those discussions. So we're hopeful that, you know, the, the different committees in the county and the, the boards look at whatever we find out and say, "That's where we want to go," and, and start planning with it. But it's more advisory in nature, I guess. Are there?
We had looked at, of course, the COSAR, is that the name?
COSARS, yeah.
COSAR. So we had looked at that. We said, "Oh, we should participate in this thing." Well, we are, and they're, they're advocating certain things at statewide level for eighty rural school districts, right? But it doesn't really, it doesn't really have the impact that this local analysis will have, I don't think. So we need, we need to do that. Another example is the Madison Agreement, right, is up. It, it terminates. And will have to be renegotiated and approved by the state before we get to do that again because it's ten years old or?
Twelve.
Twelve years old. So it, it's reaching its, its termination, and will have to be re-approved by legislation. If it's not, guess what? There's another whatever, one hundred and twenty K or whatever it ends up being, something like that. It just, all of a sudden, now we've got to find out where that's going to come from. So it's, it's looking at agreements like that that are important and how we can continue those types of patterns to improve our financial status. So that's what it is.
Are other school, other, other boards, county boards and other COSAR and other counties like ours doing similar types of initiatives? Like, like are we, is Rappahannock County the only one with something like this? We're, we're unique because we have a lot more going for us than someone far, far out away from.
Yes, well, I hope not.
Population centers.
So I hope not because we're all.
So it makes sense for us to do this. And I'm just curious if this is a trend that smaller schools like ours are doing?
I haven't seen one if there is. So this was more of a culminating conversation with the community conversations that were going on and the work that both the school board and Board of Supervisors were doing to collectively talk and ask those questions and really consider the problems. So it's a community coming together to try to figure something out and present possible solutions, even wacky, out-there solutions, but here's what this county did. What do you think? And if it's no, you know, that's okay. But, you know, just finding these things out and discussing them together.
Yeah.
So thank you, Dr.
You're welcome.
And if you have any comments about the flyer or the comment, the statements on the flyer, it's good to give some feedback to, I'd get it to Dr. Grinsley.
Are we going to put this out?
Well, it's out.
It's out. But I mean, are we going to disseminate it to parents and so forth?
Initially inviting out, you know, those who.
Individual people.
Who have been in the conversation for quite a while and showed interest already. But that's not as to say when we have this out in the public. And I think Mr. Curry also included it in his report to his board. So people have been coming forward and saying, "I'd love to serve on that." We don't want it to be too large because then there's just too many people working on a task and when you have just one task.
But people could, could write in suggestions.
Absolutely. Oh, yeah.
I mean, I would think if you could get an opportunity to have write-in suggestions where people could put their thoughts on paper and send them to the committees, that would be beneficial for everybody.
I love that idea, especially after we come up with a few ideas and then put it out there for comment back.
There's lots of smart people in Rappahannock.
There are so many smart people.
There are people with a lot of talent in getting a big group together and creating, like synthesizing the ideas in a group as well.
But I would encourage people to do that.
That's a great idea.
I like it, yeah. Thank you.
All right. Other new business?
I, I just wanted to bring to discussion for the board about the, we've, we've had a few people speak about solar as a way of saving money for our schools. We were spending, what is it? A hundred and fifty thousand on energy this year in our budget.
An apropos topic.
Yeah. It's, it's, you just talked about that number that you just talked about, one eighty. It's, it's almost exactly the same number that we're spending. We're putting it out into, to pay a bill. And we have had a number of individuals who've been speaking at our meetings and at other public meetings about how much of a trend there is in adding solar as a way of balancing a budget, which is, which is a great angle. And recently, one of those individuals sent this, this, this film, which we don't need to watch now, but it's basically superintendents speaking about using the type of, we had, we had, we had maybe four, three, three-plus years ago, we had talked about the possibility of a power purchase agreement where, where we would have zero cost to the schools and it would be, it would be something that we could purchase cheaper energy and have free solar panels with all of the added educational potential benefits as well. And this could be a really good time, since there is energy in the community around this, to, to think about, to think about that again. It's, there's been a big, I mean, I, off the top of my head, like, there's been a huge trend in Virginia. Now, when we talked about power purchase agreements years ago, it was new and not that many people had done it yet. Now it's just skyrocketed like, like huge in Virginia especially. And it just, I'd, I'd like to just propose that we might think about angles. We might get, you know, ask the board, the board might ask Dr. Bolt and Dr. Grinsley to think about angles on what would be a good fit for a small school like ours. I'm not advocating specifically for a power purchase agreement or, I, I do think we could, we could make, as Mr. Cunningham who came, he, he really thinks we could do better if we purchased solar panels and we could finance that ourselves. And I don't know, I don't know, we need expert advice on, on those things. But I just would like to bring it forward and wonder if there's consensus on the board to pursue the possi, just the possibility as we did a few years ago. And we didn't have the right solution at the time, but it's a good, it might be a good opportunity to look at that cost savings and educational opportunity to avail to our students and teachers.
Anybody else?
It might be the right thing to do. And on top of the financial opportunities and the other issues that go along with that, I, I would, I would move that, that we ask the superintendent to, to investigate and see where we go from there.
And I don't think you need to motion in your business.
Don't need to motion.
But you can just, we have consensus, it looks like, to explore options.
I think we do, I think, yeah.
For the, explore some options for the budget development process, and that's, that's all we need to move forward. And I know Dr. Bolt's already started some research and contacts already for some meetings she has set up next, next month, I believe. So we'll, we'll start that process and get information out early in the budget development process where it's appropriate so we can start having good solutions.
For next year. Good.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Could I, could I suggest that maybe Ms. Bynum be involved in that meeting? Would it be?
I'd be glad to if that would be useful.
I said, "May I suggest that Ms. Bynum be involved in your meeting with the solar people?"
I'd be glad to. I trust your judgment as well. But I would, I would be glad to if you're.
Excellent.
Yeah, the video, by the way, the video is in the onboard docs. It's good to go watch it if anybody's in the public, you just want to take a look at it. It makes a strong argument for a zero cost and, and that gain really to the division. There was one division, I remember hearing, he said, "Everything they saved because of their solar, they turned around and put it, because it's in perpetuity, they put it into the teacher's salary."
Right.
Increases. So, so I mean, there, it's a, it's a great time to investigate. Is this one of the ways we can start to make some gains? And it was asked about again at the public hearing with the supervisors. So it has been brought to their attention, just like it was brought to ours some months ago, three, three or four months ago.
Right, yeah, three or four months, yeah.
So they're, they're not going to be caught by surprise when they start to see we're investigating it or what the result might be. And of course, there are, there are several options, which will pursue several financial options.
I do remember that a concern that arose when we, when we asked for possibilities was just use of the grounds, which I think we didn't really want the grounds to be taken up by, but, you know, we can't give up playing fields, for example. So I do think we need to look at it. And, you know, but just to look at it and see also, the technology is a lot more efficient than it was even three years ago. So it's, it's worth a shot. So thank you.
Great. So we look forward to getting a report back when you guys are ready.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right. Is there any other new business tonight?
I have one, if I could. I'd love for us to investigate, yesterday, the FDA-approved vaccines for twelve to fifteen-year-olds. And I would love for us to be able to investigate the possibility of doing that in school.
Of course, I'm glad you brought that up.
Pardon me?
I'm so glad you brought that up.
Well, I, I hope I'm on the right track because I've had people call me from a rescue squad point of view, that they are more than willing. We have medics and, that can give shots. They volunteer. We, if there's a process, if there's a process, then I think we ought to be the people who make it happen. And I, I'm, I'm very proud that Rappahannock has the highest percentage of people vaccinated in our whole region, which is a really good thing as well.
Yeah.
So is it possible to look into that?
Yes, we've already requested as soon as it's approved. So the video.
You are always ahead of me.
Oh, no. The FDA has already approved its usage. However, we are waiting the CDC approval for the launch of the twelve to fifteen. Once it is, we are already, and Mr. Curry and myself are already in touch with our interim health director and the local epidemiologist too, to try to offer a local clinic in conjunction with the flu vaccine as well. That was already sort of scheduled. So we, we're working together to try to get that to happen. So we're very close to scheduling a local clinic as soon as we know that we will have access.
One, one of the things about that is that, you know, all these people that have gotten their, their vaccines, they've had to go all over the place to get them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we've not had one here. And if we could have one here, we could probably get the rest of the folks to, to ride over on their bikes. So what are we going to do?
And the supervisors did request that too at their meeting last week. So that's something the community is collectively unanimous about, trying to get a local clinic here. So we are working on that. The logistics are a little difficult when school is in session. But we do have some half-days going on that may not interfere toward the end of school, that we could still have students here who want to get it. We're looking at after-school options. So that is really close. I mean, just literally today, several emails went off. So we are already in the process of trying to plan for that.
Super. It would be wonderful if we could have seventy-five percent of the eligible kids get their vaccines.
And in a, in a format, you're saying possibly during or after school?
I would like to see it during school, but.
The idea was initially was trying to get it during so parents could give permission. Of course, it's not required or mandated, but parent permission to allow their student to come down to the clinic. And then after school lets out on one of those early release days, opening up the rest of the afternoon for community who want to come in.
I would love to see, you know, open it up to private school kids, open it up to homeschool kids.
Right. It'd be an open clinic, a pop-up clinic, basically. And they don't even need to really come inside. You've seen some of the pop-up clinics they've done in Buck Year and Culpeper. So it'd be just like that, just finding the spot for them to set up. So no one would be in and out of the buildings. It could possibly go concurrently with our school day. So Courtney is looking into that with us too, and she's got the athletic schedule and facilities use stuff, so she's on top of that too.
Yeah. It's like the drive-through.
It's part of that full-service approach.
It is.
I do think that a lot of parents of younger kids like to be there when the kid is getting the shot.
You know, I, I.
I mean, I.
I talked to a friend.
I just like to be there to hold the hand.
I talked to a friend of mine that said, "That's the worst idea they could ever have." Because, because when the parents are there, the kids are not the same as if they're there with just their friends.
They need us, and you have to let us have that.
They don't need you for every minute of the day.
They do. No, the kindergarten teacher kicked me out when I dropped them. You just need to go. When you go, it's, okay, okay.
All right, thank you. Is there any other new business? All right, our next regular scheduled board meeting is June the eighth at six thirty back in this very same place. Is there a motion to adjourn? We have motion, Mr. Ubin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
And I oppose, no. So order, thank you for coming.